All right.
All right, stand by, we're on, we're about to be go live. I'll just put everything in. I think we're live already. Hey, what's going on everybody? As you guys file in, we are going to take a moment to just share everything. On our different pages, different groups. So if you are now tuning in, just go ahead and share it. And then we'll get, and then we'll get started. You may need to tell, hold on. Matter of fact, you know what I should have did? I don't know if it's too late by now. Now, we here, we good. People following, when people following, I need to, all right, man, what's up, man?
Not much, not much.
Yeah, so for everybody who's tuning into this, we really, Miles and I wanted to have this conversation, really want to have this conversation publicly so that people will so we, there's a lot of things that have been going on in the community, a lot of misconceptions specifically in Orlando. So we wanted to make sure we can kind of clear the air to make sure that we can have some sort of direction. So people know exactly, you know, what's going on, where we're going as far as our plan of action. And really want, we want to hear from you all. So that's why we're, that's why we're doing this. You got anything, Miles, real quick?
Yeah, you know, just get on alive and talking to the people. Most important, I know a lot of the recent talk has been about, you know, what's the plan to move forward? And there's a lot of different things that's being put out in the air. I think that it's important that, you know, we all know that we all have our own individual thoughts. But there are certain things we can agree on, and that's what we need to find out as a collective eventually, where we're gonna meet at.
Yeah, and the first, I think the first, you know, for everybody that, for everyone to know is that you can join this call, you can join this Zoom call, if you click the link, join the Zoom call, if you have want to hear your thoughts about the protest, want to hear your thoughts about what's going on in your neighborhoods. And we want to hear your thoughts of how you think we should, we should move, we should move forward as well. So just click the link, zoom in, and we can get the conversation started. All right, first and foremost, man, I wanted to get your take on really what you saw at the, let's start with the Windermere protests. Cause we, you know, we are both out there, we kind of, we kind of crossed paths, and that's kind of how we, you know, we reconnected. So what was your thoughts on the Windermere protest at first? When, you know, the protest in general?
Yeah.
That you've been seeing?
I mean, I think Windermere was a, like a light version of what we're seeing on Saturday and Sunday and in general, and that was more of like an organic thing where people came together, and then you have half of the people who come out to the event who are just concerned citizens, people who might have seen it on the internet news feed, came out on their own. And then you got another half of the people who might be already in the loop, working with an organization or knows different ways to protest in the past, whether it's through school or whatever they're doing. So when you have events like that, you always have a different mix. I think that's why we see so many different responses. You got peaceful demonstrations, then you got ones that they quote unquote say get rowdy. But normally, you know, I think the big group of people always get blamed for what a couple of individuals do. And I think that people are so quick to address what they see on the news and the media. Instead of remembering, we know what the media is, we know how they play up under us and how they work our emotions. And when they know what to do. So we gotta keep that in mind when we're watching this and, and kind of, you know, unfolding about what we're seeing on TV.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think I, you know, I think honestly, the misconception, and I, you know, we've talked about this, is that people want peaceful protests. And I'm all for peaceful protests. I'm not necessarily for convenient protests. Like people want to plan out how people can civil disobedience. And it's in the word, it's actually, it's civil disobedience, you know? This is about, you know, it's not just about George Floyd, like the world, the country saw this man, you know, basically murdered in front of everybody. And we saw three officers who have yet to be arrested, just arresting the one officer is not gonna cut it. And I think these cities and these, in the DA was a representative is Mike Freeman. You know, he is more comfortable with maintaining, you know, white supremacy and maintaining that than actually producing justice. These men should have been arrested immediately. And I think that's why we're seeing such unrest in the country. And George Floyd happened, but George Floyd, this is not why the country you're seeing all these demonstrations across the country. This has been brewing since Trayvon Martin. This has been brewing for a long time in this country. And George Floyd was just the straw that broke the camel's back. Like, people were like, oh, hell no. Now we're, we're blatantly lynching people in broad daylight while it's being filmed. And we don't care, and we're not holding people accountable. So that's something that we need to, that's why we're out here. You know, that's why myself as a journalist that I want to that, you know, I want to cover this and, and, and I wanted to help having an activist background. And so I'm honored to reconnect with you so that we can connect with the community and do what we gotta do because unity, right, is we can't ask anybody to unite if we don't unite first and foremost amongst ourselves.
Yeah, and I think that's important because a lot of people see things and they think that, I think it's black or white, or that is one way to do it. And I, I think that we'll learn like many hands make it work. And that sometimes what is lacking is which is not always in touch with each other. We might have different people that got different expertise that we just gotta bring everybody together. And I think that's what the people talk about Orlando and just every other city that's doing something actively. When you see, like you said, this ain't about George Floyd only, or about just Ahmaud Arbery. And it's not about just the ones that have made the headlines. It's also about the ones that each of these cities is rioting or just protesting in the beginning.
Yeah.
They're protesting because they all experienced the same kind of police brutality at their home. And I think that's what people sometimes, just because we had your cousin got shot and killed, but it didn't make national news and it wasn't Black Lives Matter, but he got shot and killed by the police and he didn't have a gun. That don't make it right just because somebody didn't tell you that it wasn't a national headline. And we gotta think about what happens at home too, and why this reason why I seen people in the crowd who were screaming, my cousin was shot by OPD. My daddy got killed by OPD. Like, these are people with personal ties too, and that's why they're going so hard. It's not just hype. People are feeling the pain from what they went through themselves too.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I want to start, like, I commend everybody that's out there, right? I, I do commend, but we have to, I think it's important, the protests, let me commend all the protesters. Whether you're, you know, who, whether you're peaceful or not, that, that's, you know, your business, or you see what I'm saying? But if you're out there and you're trying to make a difference, you're trying to make a stance, you're trying to raise awareness. I appreciate you. Now, there, we have to differentiate between the people that are actually out there across the country, even here in Orlando. Like, we have looters are just looters, right? Those aren't protesters. If you make a decision to loot, you're no longer a protester. Like, if you're, if you make a decision to, you know, be a criminal or whatever, that's the choice that that person make. That doesn't necessarily make you make, you shouldn't classify the entire bunch of protesters in one line. You see what I'm saying? And I think a lot of times that's what's going on right now. And also, we got, you know, and you, we, you and I spoke about this. There's a lot of folks, and when it comes to a lot of that looting and stealing and vandalism, there's a lot of people from outside of black communities that are not from our communities, that are vandalizing our communities. And then writing Black Lives Matter on stuff as if they're a part of the Black Lives Matter movement. And so the movement of itself at this point is being co-opted by people that really don't give a damn about George Floyd. They really don't give a damn about police brutality. They really don't give a damn about dismantling white supremacy. They're just trying to be out here, you know, in what I call civil rights movement cosplay. You know, to make it seem to give the appearance that they are, they are out here.
For the people.
Exactly, holding, holding the signs down for the people, all the good stuff. But we know as activists, as organizers and those who are watching, it takes a lot more than that, right? It takes a lot more than just holding the sign, chanting and screaming, because eventually all of this is gonna subside and the work is still going, and the work is still going to remain.
Yeah.
Again, for though, go ahead.
No, I, I was just gonna say that I think that that's a good point. I think that when people talk about a follow-up too. We keep in mind that the follow-up is gonna be long-term. It's gonna be hard, it's not gonna be something that we get by Friday, you know? And then we edit for the long run.
And the thing is, is that it has to be, and I saw President Barack Obama had a quote today, and I actually agree with him. The process to having justice is going to have to be both movement-based, it's gonna have to be political as well. So for all the folks that are just like, oh, I don't do politics, I don't do this. It's going to have to, because a lot of the people that are in power are influencing the laws that are allowing the police officers to systematically brutalize, terrorize, and harass you in your community and do it with impunity. So if you don't get into the game and understand that you have to affect change on that level as well. Not saying you just do that, you can, you can, like we said, it's something for everybody in this movement. If you want to do stuff on social media, if you want to be the person that talks about policy, if you want to meet with people and engage with people, there's something for everybody on, in this movement. However, it all has to work together for its good. You gotta collaborate with different people. And, and I think what makes me upset is where we have individuals who, let me not say them, let me not go there right now. But what you have to do is you have to, if you're going to organize into these communities, you have to have an understanding of what has been done, what's currently being done, and where, what are the goals moving forward? You can't just jump into something and say, well, this is what I want to do. Because you're undercutting a lot of good work from a lot of good people that have been doing this work for a multitude of years.
Yeah, and I agree. And I think like, when it comes down to it, we really do need some, a, a, a pipeline for us, you know? And that's what people, like, we've been talking about in the past and just being developed. And the pipeline is just to say that your idea can be placed in a place that you never know who can actually help you. You never know who has the missing piece to that puzzle you're trying to fill. And I think when we talk about, like, protesting, I saw an interesting comment on Facebook where somebody said, you know, let us not forget that Martin Luther King protested so we could have the right to vote. And so since people like to say, you know, we like to quote Martin Luther King and say, you know, they like to say peaceful protests, but they don't like to bring up the fact that they got hosed by water hoses and, you know, hit with the dogs right after that, or they like to say that, you know, we just need to vote, that's it, but then forget the fact that people protested and got hurt and went against the law in order to get that right to vote. So we have to understand that nothing has ever been done with just one prong approach. It's always been a collective of different things.
Yeah, we have to, it's imperative that we make sure, especially here locally, if we're talking, having a local conversation, we gotta make sure, and it's imperative, that the movement of what we're doing does not get hijacked. It's not just about chanting and stuff. That's all well and good, but eventually this is gonna subside, right? Or actually, you know, our president, he just made things a lot worse with his latest, you know, authoritarian, you know, declaration of, you know, military use in military force on American citizens. But here in Orlando, let's stick to here in Orlando.
Yeah.
Orlando has, Orlando has a serious problem with police accountability. Orlando has a problem, Orlando, Orange County has a serious problem with the police accountability. Orlando has a problem with excessive force. Orlando has a problem with Yep, we're covering stuff up and police and police misconduct. For anybody who doesn't understand that, you need to do your research and make sure that you get that clear. And the people who are responsible for these policies, responsible for this misconduct are still around and still here to this day. And so what does accountability, what does accountability look like? So, you know, there are citizen police review board meetings, but our citizens' police review board, as we learned in the past year and a half, does not have any weight to it. Doesn't have any subpoena power, and a lot of times, none of these places have, these things, these these things that are put in place, these mechanisms that are put in place have power because of the police bill of rights. The police unions have, are have heavily influence over the discipline of their police officers. And most of these police officers, whether they're suspended or anything like that, or they get any, or any sort of punishment, all they do is go through arbitration and they just get their money right back. And they get their pension or whatever, all that stuff, right, their hours right back. The only thing that these chiefs and can do is give them a shitty detail. And that's what they've, basically what they've been doing, which is, which is really a bunch of nothing. Hold on, I just want to make sure I'm reading. For anybody that wants to join in on this, you can, you're more than, welcome to, you go ahead, Miles.
Yeah, and I think a lot of times that we talk about what's going on in Orlando with the police. I think that what happens, because you know, we dealt with families and we all have had our own approach of families that have lost family members, but it hasn't been done by shooting. So when it's not a shooting, sometimes it's not as provocative or as, you know, it's not as head, it's not in the headlines as much. But we do have an issue with people being harmed. We have excessive, or, you know, excessive was excessive force complaints, a lot of issues with IC high-speed pursuits in residential areas. You know, things when it comes to patrolling that is kind of looked at like Jim Crow-ish type laws, where if you're just in a certain neighborhood, you could be stopped and pulled. And I think that a lot of times as a black community, we kind of come conditioned to it. And we also divide sometimes like, well, what did a person get pulled over? Did they have something on them? Doesn't matter if it was an illegal stop, you know, or were they doing something wrong? And I think that we need to look at what Orlando is doing, because I know for a fact, when we see these photo ops with Orlando police chief and Orlando sheriff kneeling down and handshaking with one or two black people out of a random crowd, they try to send a message like this is what the peace relations are in the city. When, as a black person in the city, we know you'd get scared, even if you live in fully legal, if Orange County or OPD gets behind you.
Yeah, can I, can I touch, can I touch on that real quick? I want to make sure, I, let me go ahead and share, I'm gonna share my screen with everybody real quick. Cause I want everybody to know what I'm talking about. Hold on, one second. Oh, let me pull up the, the picture somewhere. Someone just posted it. It is a picture of, let me give it one second. Actually, I might just go to my page. Let me go to my page, give me one second, y'all. I want to show everybody this post so that you can understand exactly what we're talking about for those who, who did not, who not, did not get a chance to see it. Here it is. All right, so this was posted, actually, this was posted by Representative Anna Eskamani, okay? This is a picture of, and it's kind of cut off on the right-hand side. This is the picture of Chief alone of Orlando Police Department and John Mina, right? This is a picture of them through the gates, holding young black men's hands through the, through the metal bars and posing for a photo op as if they gave a damn about what was going on out there as far as peaceful protests, okay? What, what's not being reported correctly by the, by the media, right? Is that right after that, they got tear gassed, the people that got, got tear gassed right outside of OPD. So we have people using you as political props. And this young man who's been leading these marches here in Orlando, I actually interviewed him on, on, you know, my page or on, with, on the soapbox. You know, is someone who has a history of one of his family members being shot by OPD. He is a basketball player, he's not a real seasoned organizer, he's just somebody that wants to be out here. And that's great to have a lot of energy. But when the law enforcement know that you're not as seasoned, they're gonna use you for these photo opportunities just to make it seem like, and here's why it's so dangerous for people like Anna Eskamani and OPD in the city of Orlando to be parading these images out here and all of the media that's, that's heavily influenced by our government here locally. It's dangerous because it tells everybody, hey, there's nothing to see here, Miles. There's, you know, we're all good, we're all unified. It's just like these these barbecues and fish fries that they like to do when they take pictures of you and, and black kids doing the nae nae. This is what they're doing. It's all political propaganda for everybody to say, there's nothing to see here, we're with you. You can go home, please, it's a way to dilute and divert the energy to somewhere, to somewhere else. When, in all actuality, Noel Carter, and you guys can look that up. Noel Carter was being kicked in the head by law enforcement, by, by law enforcement officers of OPD. And John Mina was like, hey, there's more to that tape that you guys, that you guys didn't see, and I'm paraphrasing. So these officers and these people and his leadership is still here. He is now with the Sheriff's Department. And shame on, on Chief alone for taking that BS photo opportunity and then all of his officers deploying gas, you know, tear gas on peaceful protesters. And for everything that you're seeing from everyone I talked to and sources I talked to that were at the protest, police are agitating these peaceful protesters, right? They're claiming that people are throwing bottles at them. They're claiming that, oh, yeah, but these are, some of that is, it's not true. I mean, I can't put it any more plain than that. Yes, there are some people that are doing that, but for the majority, it's peaceful, it's peaceful protesters. And it's a lot of the folks that are doing that, don't go, don't live here, don't know anything about this community. And, and so that's the, that's the problem.
And I think that one thing about Orlando and Central Florida that some people who may not be in a younger generation may not realize is that on Twitter itself, which is still the number one social media platform.
Yeah.
Really had it go viral with this man's address in Central Florida. And when that took place, we had a surge of people from out of town who were driving from Brevard and, and from, you know, Daytona and all these different places and saying, I drove from Tampa just to come here, because I know this is where the dude stays at. So, you know, we got an influx of people coming here, and that's why I feel like it's more than important, it's more important for people to know that, like we said, we gotta kind of distinguish between who's doing what, because people need to know the people in Orlando are not the ones doing everything. You know, there are some people who are doing some things, but everyone like should not be associated with the Tampa evasion, or Polk County invaded Orange County to go to prom outlets. You can't associate that with Orlando.
Oh, that's what was going on?
Yeah, it's online viral, going viral, and I could find a screenshot to give it to you later, so you can even post it too, but
Okay.
Follow with like almost 1.5 thousand shares at the time when I saw it, of them meeting up at the prom outlets at midnight. They're planning these Newton on social media. Which, you know, my brother's sister, don't let the social media fool you, just because you don't think you know. You know, this social media is not our friend. It is a tool, but do not get too comfortable with it, because everything is being watched.
Yeah, that's true as well. And here's what people needs to realize it, because people are gonna say, okay, TJ, Miles, okay, what are the solutions? How do we differentiate the real from the fake? How do we differentiate if we want to do the work? How do we channel? I'm seeing people say, how do we channel the energy? Great, the way you channel, the way you channel the energy is first this, if any organization tries to get you to come to their march, their rally, whatever, ask them, it's a, it's a very simple question. Show me what you have done for police brutality prior to this incident with George Floyd. Ask them if they've been to a police citizen review board meeting. Ask them to show you any of the data or any of the research that they've done, or case studies, or show them any of the demonstrations that they've done for George Floyd prior to. And I'm telling you right now, it's not a lot of them. It's not a lot of them that have, that have done that. And there's only been like three people, three or four people at police citizen review board meetings. It's Lawana Gelsa, David Porter, myself, and then there's some stragglers that come in, four, four and five. So a lot of folks, you know, you want to come out here and you want to leave and you lead and you have great energy, but that goes back to linking up with people and these organizers, link up with people. A lot of these organizations who are leading these protests and these demonstrations are trying to sign people up for you to donate to their organization or misrepresenting themselves. They're trying to, you know, get you, this is not about Democrat or Republican, man. This is about dismantling anti-black racism and white supremacy and the policies that go with it. So all of this, taking a knee and moment of silence, that's all good, it makes you feel good. But at the end of the day, when all this trendy stuff subsides, it's not gonna get the work done to actually, but, you know, get us free and have some justice or bring police accountability. Police will take pictures with you all day. They'll get ice cream with you, they'll do a cookout with you. But you tell them to hold those quote unquote bad apples accountable, and it's few and far between. That's the truth, especially here in, in Orlando. So, we got some people, if you want to call, if you want to join and call up, you more than, you're more than welcome to. If you got other ideas, you can jot them, jot them down. Yes, people are talking about the propaganda, yes. Propaganda, or anybody who, what I would like everybody to do, another one. So we talked about the police citizen review board, review board meetings. We also talked about the propaganda that is being put out there. A lot of these folks are not from this community. A lot of folks who need to understand specifically, and shame on Anna Eskamani, who's a representative here for, for sharing police propaganda. Like, like, first of all, you know, Miles is very easy to contact. I'm very easily to contact. You could contact Lawana Gelsa, you could have contacted some people who are actually out here doing that. She knows. She was very much aware of all of the racial discrimination and was actually invited to the blackout that I did two years ago. But you were too busy. Either, no, I wouldn't say too busy, you ignored it blatantly because it didn't fit, it wasn't trending. And you would have to go against the same establishment that you are now a part of. So you can't be progressive and talk about that you are about and talk that you're this big progressive, but you have neglected issues in the African-American community, specifically police misconduct and police brutality. Let's keep it 100, let's keep it funky.
And I agree, and I think, one thing I would say that you hit on that we gotta watch out for is when it comes to like the hijacking and people misrepresenting themselves. We got a lot of groups out here that will camouflage themselves with movements.
In your t-shirts.
Yeah, you know, and I got an exact example of groups that have reached out and, you know, I, I, I'm holding my cards right now to, to play it out in, in a, in a different way.
Yeah.
Watching, they know that they, they'll infiltrate, they come around, they, and they hand out this fake little olive branch, like they want to help you out because they really want to find out your insight, your influence, and they want to try to infiltrate what you're doing. You know, I got groups right now, big groups that will wear my shirt to donate money, to raise money just this weekend over at the march. There was groups in there doing it. I have an associate that I sold a shirt to two years ago. Haven't talked to this person in two years, no kind of doing, but they seen what we did on Friday. So they came out Saturday and Sunday with our shirts on to collect money and say that, and say that they were raising money, but it didn't say that.
So, so, so that'll be number three. Don't, don't, don't give anybody any money. We're not asking for nobody's money.
Exactly. And you gotta watch out when people doing things, you gotta watch out, man, because it's what I see a lot of times with black people, we're so. And you gotta watch out when people doing things, you gotta watch out, man, because it's what I see a lot of times with black people, we're so passionate and fired up. That we'll see people doing stuff and think that's the right thing to do and we help them. I saw white people hand black people bricks and be like, throw it. You know, I saw people say, you know, get them water bottles, man, fuck that, toss that, because they know it's different for you than it is for them. You know, we just gotta watch out, we can't let people trick us off these streets when it comes to what we're trying to accomplish.
Yes, and, and here's, and here's the thing. The city officials know who's actually been in this fight. Uh, for uh, police accountability, who's been talking about racism, who's been talking about excessive force and police misconduct. But what the reason, we're not dogging you out because you are uh, these uh, the people who come from in town that wanna, that wanna help out. What's going to happen is those city officials who really, or, or the city officials who just want to pacify things. Are going to reach back to people who, A, don't know what's been going on. Two, that are just comfortable that they could use them as political props and then they'll give you some lip service. And say, okay, well, this is the progress we tried, right? So, you know, if any elected official, all of these elected officials, what you uh, the state legislator. You guys need to be figuring out what we can do to repeal uh, or remove that police bill of rights up in Tallahassee. That's the influence and the reason why these officers are, are being, are being, say, these suspected white supremacists. That infiltrate law enforcement are being safe Harvard in these law enforcement agencies and brutalizing people in our communities. It's a public safety issue. Because these police officers, if, if Miles or, Miles commits a crime or I commit a crime. We're gonna get charged, we're gonna have to go through a process. We don't have this big agency that comes in and, 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 and have arbitration in these kangaroo courts. And just to get you off and then you still get your job back. So what we need you to do, your state legislature, so an, another solution is to contact your state legislator. And say, hey, what's your stance on this police bill of rights? And how do we make sure that these uh, police citizen review boards have more, have more power? And if it's the, and since it's the police bill of rights that's stopping that, well then we need to look at the, we need to continue to look at the laws. On the state level, so that's why it's important in to get into this political game. Because your representative has influence. So you need to contact your representative. You know, and I, I believe OPD already did their um, I want to say they already did their new contracts. For, for their, for uh, their new country, but we'll also be working on some other things. Miles and I, we have a, uh, some organizers as well that will be working on some, some, a five-point plan. Uh, to make sure that we present to you guys. Uh, if you guys have any questions or uh, any suggestions, holler at Miles, holler at me, Miles, what's your contact information?
Yeah, contact me, you could follow my Facebook if you don't see it, it's uh, Miles Mulrain Jr., last name M U L R A I N. Then you could follow me on Instagram at Let Your Voice Be Her CEO. And then our business page is Let Your Voice Be Her Inc. So you know, that's the best way to stay up to date, you know, get in touch with me, inbox me, direct message me. Um, you know, and one thing that I will typically do that. Keep faith that people are working because like you just said, we have a five-point plan that we're releasing. So when you see these current events taking place, these protests, you're getting restless because you know that's not the best mode that you would take. And you're saying, we need to be here, we need to be there, we agree. You know, and sometimes in order to get to the finish line, we gotta pass a couple pit stops. And I think that's where we're at right now, we're going past the first couple pit stops. Go to the actual last leg before we get some real change.
Yeah, and it's definitely not a, this is not gonna be a quick, it's not gonna be a quick fix. Right, and so anybody who thinks that, you know, if you have this energy and you want to do something, it's not a quick fix. Um, there are certain uh, elections. That are, we have a, we have a sheriff's election, we have a state attorney's election that are, that are coming up in August. So we need to get involved, we need to be heavily involved with that as well. When we're talking about what we, what we want to do in holding people, uh, police officer accountable. Um, you know, again, we want to hear from you guys, uh, anybody that wants to, you know, post any suggestions that you may have. Um, and one of the things that I know Miles and I talked about, we gotta make sure that we're protecting, we're protecting our youth. We gotta make sure that there's an economic component about um. You know, economics component to all of this as well, to make sure that we can, that our community stay viable after the fact. Um, so there's a lot, so there's diff, there's a lot of ideas that are being in the work and just because you don't. Uh, you, just because you don't see us posting or taking a whole bunch of pictures that protest and all that. And if you, if you, if that's what you want to do or that's fine, I'm not knocking you for that, go nuts, go crazy. Just know that there are people who are on the ground level, who's, who have been on the ground level that are talking, that are, that are communicating. Uh, and that are trying to organize and strategize so that we can have sus- uh, sustainable, tangible resources. Coming to our community so that we can hold uh, law enforcement officers uh, accountable uh, for their actions.
Yeah, yeah, and I agree, man, and I think, I, I think what's real important to move forward is that. People reach out to us for real, like I, I heard you say it a couple of times and I've seen some comments, but don't feel, don't feel hesitant to reach out. Because this is all our community and a lot of times when we have voices go up. We don't feel like every voice got heard because people didn't get a chance to even speak up and tell people what's on their mind. Let's, let's build for real.
Yeah, let's continue to uh, to get input on, on these issues. If you're going out to these protests, be safe, watch out for people who are, you know, who are being agitators. Um, what, make sure you, if you can. Take a, take a snapshot of, if you see officers that are out there using excessive force, take a snapshot of their uh, you know. And or ask for their badge number or take a picture of who the actual officer is so that we can take, hold them accountable. Because the narrative right now that's coming down from the city is that, well, it was, it was the protesters' fault. That's why we did the tear gas, it was their fault, but there's video of officers agitating peaceful protesters. And people still in there using excessive force, however, the media here, they are putting these images up that they actually care. The reason why I don't care about any officers kneeling, specifically here in Orlando. Is because when it came to the Pro Bowl, the NFL Pro Bowl was here and uh, protesters wanted to take a knee. They made sure to block us. They made sure to block us, they didn't want to take, they, they didn't want to take a knee. They don't understand these things, man, they don't understand that this has been going on in this community for such a long time. And people are fed up and rightfully so, all across this country. All across, across this country, people are fed up. And so the best way to hold some of these people accountable, to hold these officials accountable. Is they need to, they need to leave, because I don't believe we can fix a, a broken system. With the same players involved.
Exactly. Exactly.
We, it's just something, we just can't, we can't do it, so um, reach out to us. We don't, I don't want to be on here or keep everybody's time too long, uh, we wanted to make sure that, you know, let y'all know that. Uh, Miles and I, we all working in conjunction to uh.
And, and before we, before we go to conclusion, uh, one of the things that I know we really wanted to touch on too was like. Taking place tomorrow and coming up in the next couple of days or a couple of events, marches and demonstrations.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, yeah, yeah, do that.
Yeah, keep in mind that, you know, unless you see somebody who's like one of us or a person that you have known, put in that work, it has the equity. Post a protest flyer, you gotta keep in mind where it's coming from and what is the goal that they're trying to get. Are these people who have put in the sweat with you and know what your pain is, or are they doing it to follow up on momentum? Because there are some genuine people who are out here doing things and then there are some people who are agenda-driven. Who have seized this moment to take this momentum to kind of turn it into what they're trying to fight for. So everyone, I, I, you know, we like to say agendas, then everyone has an agenda, but it's everyone's agenda for you. And that's what we need to keep in mind when we see people roll things out and they start off good with police brutality, yeah, yeah, then they start going to. Uh, another common issue like housing, yeah, 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 then they start going into this bill that you never heard of, you're like, okay, maybe. Then they start talking about this politician that you haven't had the chance to research for yourself and you're like, okay, whatever you say. And then they keep going and that's how you kind of get caught up in someone else's narrative. Do your research and make sure you're following what you want to follow.
Yeah, so. Miles said it the nice version, I'm, I'm, I'll play, I'll, we'll, we'll do good cop, bad cop, how about that? So basically, what we're saying, what he, what he's saying is, there's a lot of these organizations that just want you to be their political sharecroppers. Right? It's not about actually putting in, did you freeze that Miles on me? I think he did. It's not about actually putting in um, you know, work or doing the research or whatever. They just want you to be their political props, don't allow anybody to let you be a political prop. You want to make sure that the organization is legit and they have a track record of the work that they act, that they're, that they want you to do. Or they want you to participate in. You know, and I think there's so mu, so many times, organizations. Um, that's cool, yeah, my city phone that, it's alright. Uh, so many organizations, so many organizations say, you know, hey, you know, come in, join us. This is what we want to do, you want to lead the march, but then you're not there in the fire. When the stuff is really going down and that's the problem, Organized Florida, I'm talking to you. That's the major problem and I've already been to your office before and your people know, people know me. And so I've, and we've had these conversations before uh, over the years. And so all this hijacking stuff needs to, needs to really stop. Yes, we need everybody to be a part of the movement, yes, we, we need people to be all hands on deck. But it's extremely offensive that when you have people and you know people that are actually doing the work, that are showing progress. That are leading the way and then you come in like culture vouchers and decide to say, well, this is what we're gonna do. And you're presenting plans to the city, presenting plans to, uh, to the police department and the sheriff's department. Without consulting, collaborating or talking with anyone on behalf of our community. How can you articulate my black experience when you don't even frequent my community? This is why it's, this is why it's a problem. And wearing people's shirts and misrepresenting yourself is disingenuous, posting political propaganda needs to stop. It needs to stop. Because what you're doing is you're disappointing the people that actually have good energy, that want to come out here. That want to do the work, that want to actually be a part of something and tangible and, and get some work in. So that we can change this system and then when you come with your BS. And there's no, and, or they go to an event or a protest and there's nothing but twerking and a boombox. And all this other, all this other nonsense that's going on, that really don't have nothing to do with George Floyd. That really don't have anything to do with police accountability or talking about policy, has nothing to do with that, it's just a big nothing burger. Taking a knee and putting, and getting some markers and a sign, that's only symbolism. Symbolism is not going to get you freedom. Alright, so we got uh, some other folks in here, if you guys, anybody want to hop on, it's in the description, if you have something to say, even if you disagree with me. You're more than welcome to hop on, I'll patch you in through uh, the Zoom, through the Zoom call. We appreciate everybody who's uh, who's checking in, let me see if there's, there's some questions here. Okay, someone asked, what, what happens, what can you do if a protest is peaceful? And then the gas come, the gas comes your way, the first thing I would do is if anybody is in a situation where there's tear gas or anything like. Uh, anything like that. One, you gotta get out of the way, that's, that's, I think that goes without saying. Also, I would take pictures before the tear gas and everything starts, you guys have to start documenting. Take pictures of these folks, take pictures of the officers, I know they're gonna try to cover, take pictures of the officers so that you can hold them accountable. Also, there, if you look on the Soapbox Podcast uh, page, if you guys go and like that page. We're keeping you updated on everything that's going on, not just here in Orlando, but across the country, there are attorneys. If you ever get arrested, there are attorneys that are doing pro bono work in Tampa. There are attorneys that are doing pro bono work in Orlando, make sure you link up. Because Trump has basically declared that he's gonna deploy military. Uh, military troops across, across these states and we don't know which governor is going to ask. Uh, for military assistance on, on protesters, so we gotta be extremely prepared. Be prepared for that, and he's already talking about lengthy sentences. So we do not know if when you're out there protesting and you're chanting, if they're gonna say that you are the one that is inciting, inciting a riot. And they try to arrest you, so make sure that you have, that you memorize and you have uh, some of these pro bono attorneys. Make sure you have their information uh, on you at all times. Because we don't know, and the way our governor is set up, and the way he idolizes Trump, he may just ask Trump for that military backing. In the state of Florida, so you have to be prepared for that. Uh, another question. Uh, do you fight, do you think, let me tell you this, like I said, I believe in a uh, in peaceful protest. I don't believe in convenient protests, but also believe you have a right to defend yourself. You do not, they do not have a right to, to just brutalize you and beat you. Now you are, you have a right to be a, you be a law-abiding citizen and exercise your rights. But no one has a right to just beat you uh, for nothing, it's just not gonna happen. So I would make sure, like I said, these lawyers that are doing this pro bono work. Keep, keep their name, keep their name, know their numbers, start memorizing that stuff, we memorize songs, all these different things. We can memorize numbers of these attorneys, so if they happen to arrest you and you get a phone call or whatever. You make sure you call, you leave a message and let them know who you are, where you are and give them, and give you your information. Alright, Miles is back. He's passionate.
Oh, duh, using this low technology.
No, you're good, I was thinking, I was feeling some questions for some folks asking, what do you do uh, if you're arrested? What do you do uh, if they start uh, deploying tear gas? Uh, to recap, I was letting people know that, hey, some, if you look on the soapbox uh, the soapbox page. Uh, there are some lawyers that have put their information out there and if any lawyers that are watching, if you're, that uh, they're giving pro bono work. They're saying, hey, if you're protesting, you've been arrested, they're gonna try to get you out of there or we'll get you out of there pro bono. So memorize some of these numbers and some of these names so that if anything pops off. You can, you know, make sure you try to take pictures, you document it, but make sure you have these uh, the information uh, handy, so you know it.
Um, video document what you can, like you were saying earlier, also video document. If you see somebody from outside, you know, doing something crazy, throwing bricks and, and doing something like harming a protester. I'm not telling you to turn it in, but just for your own protection, you don't want to be blamed for something that somebody else did.
Yeah, well, look, if they're not from your community and they're trying to sabotage your protest. Yo, I've seen people do that in other protests, they've literally ushered them to the law enforcement, like yo, take, take them. Because what you're gonna do is you're gonna make the, you're gonna make the block hot and a lot of these folks don't live here or go here.
Two or three white boys out, and not to say that this is the white boys, but it was the white boys getting rowdy at Windermere at that nighttime. You know, that just came there and it's sometimes not even that they are agents, which I do think some of them are. But I also think that some people just got that white privilege and they got that, uh, you know, that, and they're out of town, like they can't catch. You know, so it's not the same to them.
Yeah, and, and be on the, and also be on the lookout for some of these uh, deputized white supremacists that will be out there. Because they're gung ho about Trump's little uh, you know, authoritarian speech about, you know, guns and, and protecting. And second amendment, amendment. Make sure, I would say if you're protesting, stay close to, and you're going with a group. And you're in a group, make sure you stick with your group, right? So if there's a big protest, make sure you stick with your group within a group. So that you know where each other and be accountable for each other, okay, I know that we came with four, make sure you leave, make sure you leave with four. Try, and guys, I understand this is a uh, you know, we're still, this is still a pandemic too. So be as safe, you gotta be as safe as possible, you know, with your mask, if you can't wear gloves, you know, do that, but um. You know, just be out there, uh, just try to be as safe, uh, safe as possible, but like I said, I don't believe in being convenient. If that's what you wanted to do, that's fine, but there's things you could do on. But there's things you could do on social media. They were gonna need you when it comes to policy. We're gonna need you for reform for police account, for accountability. Uh, there's a sheriff's race going on. There's a state attorney's race going on, uh, locally. We're gonna talk about, uh, we'll be presenting some stuff, uh, economically when it comes to these, you know, businesses and making sure that our communities, specifically black communities, are economically viable and thriving in our, in, on these communities. So there's a lot of work to still be, uh, done. Make sure you're linking up with Miles. Make sure you're, uh, following either my personal page or follow me on the Soapbox page, Soapbox being uh, an outlet, because black media doesn't have, you haven't been seeing any local black media outlets reporting on this stuff. And I'm not trying to toot our own horn, but this is, this is, this is it right now. Um, as far as being vocal and just straight black, independent, not cutting corners as far, you know. So shout out to David Porter, he's probably the, the only other one. That's out here trying to, uh, try to make some headway and tell, and tell the truth. These other mid, uh, local media outlets, they're gonna only go but so far. Cause they don't want to be blackballed, and they know where their bread is buttered. So they're, so they're gonna paint a picture. So when the mayor says, hey, you know, we're with you, and all this, okay. Any elected official that tells you that they're with you, tell them to show me the policy, that shows you that they're with you, and tell them, and ask them, have they come out in solidarity with these protesters? So, a- and if they haven't, or any candidate that hasn't been out there in solidarity with protesters, you don't vote for them. Alright, let me see if this, you go ahead, Miles.
Yeah, man, I, I just agree, and I just think, like, just think soon. Uh, man, we got some things that we want to work on for police reform. You know, we got things that we're trying to work on for what's going on with past cases. And I think that a lot of times people don't realize that, you know, we're also learning, we're all evolving. So let us evolve together. You know, we tried one route, and I like, a lot of people like to reference Orlando from Trayvon Martin. I would like to think that because of Trayvon Martin and how it ended with George Zimmerman, that we, the people learned that we need to be a more sphere of influence, so that we don't have these same things repeat in other places too, in, in our own backyard.
Let me, let me articulate, cause I think a lot of people are talking about, okay, what this police citizen review board, what does that entail? Okay, so if there's an officer that has missed, that you feel has violated you, or used excessive force, you have to file a complaint. When you file a complaint, uh, it goes to internal, internal affairs. Internal Affairs does a investigation, where it's basically the police are policing the police, which we can no longer allow to happen in these communities. So once they investigate it, then those findings go to the citizen review board for review. And the citizen review board, at this point, because they have no subpoena power, because they're, um, they have no subpoena power, they really have no way or authority to punish these officers and hold them accountable. It's basically a glorified, uh, guidance counselor session, where the internal affairs guy, uh, what's his name, Rivers, if you guys know who that is, he's, he's supposed to be neutral, but he's there to buck dance for, for, um, the police unions and play his fiddle during these meetings, to make sure that anytime, and he's a black man, to make sure that any type of racism or discrimination or police brutality is justified. That's his role. His role is to be, to not be forthcoming with the facts and to misconstrue what you say in your testimony. So if you know that guy, or if you, or you have to experience him, everybody in the community, you know, that we call, that is, uh, step and fetch it. And he is there, and that's his role. That's why he plays it. So he's gonna play nice. Oh, we listened to you, we did a thorough investigation, we're gonna hold these officers accountable. That's BS. So he's there, so when you go to these meetings, you get your opportunity to speak, say what the officer did. Then the officer either can't show up or won't show up, he, he may not even show up. So internal affairs then, at that point, they present the case to the citizen review board, and they either sustain the punishment, or they, you know, they either sustain it, saying the person was good, or they say that, you know, this person, uh, I forget, I'm forgetting the terminology right now, or they're saying that the, uh, the officer either did what you said he did, or he didn't. Either it's guilty or not guilty, but it's not even sustain or not sustain. I believe that's the terminology. Forgive me if I don't, uh, if I don't have that right. And then after that, they, they vote on it, right? And more than likely, in the past, police citizen review boards have said, they have sided with the internal affairs investigation and the offices. So it's not really, only one time, and the reason I know this is because I brought something in front of the citizen review board, and it was the, I believe it's the first time, Luana will correct me if I'm wrong, that it was unanimous. And they actually made recommendations to the, to the mayor and the chief, that the officer, which is Robert Shelhorn, should be fired. Right? Should be terminated. But they didn't have, they don't have the power to do that. And the reason they don't have the power to do that is because of the police, uh, the police bill of rights. And any punishment that is sanctioned by internal affairs, I'm telling you, they can go, that's where the police unions then go to, uh, the police unions. Any, any punishment rendered. They then have an opportunity to appeal the decisions with their attorneys, with the police unions, who backed them, and during these kangaroo court arbitration rules of someone, and the arbitrator is someone who's on it, is either on his last leg, or who's really buddy-buddy with them, because you could tell by his demeanor. He sides with the police officers, and they get all the suspension time back. So that's the process, and the process is not, is, there's no accountability in that process. The most that they do is all the bad police officers with a history of misconduct, uh, they send them to, they send them to the airport. So that's where all our tourists, when they arrive, most of the police are, because they don't like being there. Most of the police officers go to the, the airport. That's considered the shitty detail. So that's the dark shadowy place for the law enforcement here locally. So that's the process. When you talk about police accountability, there really isn't any. It doesn't, it, it does, it doesn't exist. So there has to be an economic component. We gotta make sure that our, our, our youth are safe, make sure our business, our businesses are thriving, and making sure that we hold these officers accountable. And so it's gonna take us all, especially with, you know, reaching out to our, uh, elected officials. That's something you could do right now. If there's something you want to do right now, ask your elected official what their position is on George Floyd. Ask your elected official what their position is on police accountability, and, and, and how they feel like they can improve police accountability. You can literally do that right now. So, um, so, and let's see, and let's see if you get, get your response. So, uh, email your elected official, because eventually the protesting and, and, and the chanting and the symbolic knee gestures, all that's gonna stop. Hold on, let's see, anymore. If you have any more questions, let me know. Let us know. You have anything else, Miles?
No, man, I think you hit on the head. I think, like I, like you just said, and all that stuff, we go into the next phase. With the politicians, what I would say is, when you email them too, ask them to take a vocal and public stand. Um, ask them to, you know, it, it's not hard. It's social media, everybody online right now. They can all make a post, make a video saying, I stand with the citizens and want, and reform for police accountability and more protection for our citizens.
Or, and also condemn the use of excessive force during the protest.
Exactly, exactly. And govern, Governor Cuomo up in New York, he's definitely done that. Um, you know, whether it's lip service or not, it's the first step to catch them and make them put their money where their mouth is. And that's what we need.
And, 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 and I'm glad you brought that up, because I also want to talk to the officer. If you're an officer who doesn't have a history of police misconduct, who doesn't, who, who serves our community valiantly, who makes sure, who, who actually honors your badge, then you need to be standing with the protesters. You should be keeping everybody safe in the community, and we thank you. But if you are not speaking out and identifying, it's not just good to just, you have to start identifying which officers are out here using excessive force and misconduct. If you're not doing it, please do not classify yourself as this good, valiant officer, or this, or this good cop. Those days are over. You gotta draw a line in the sand. You're no longer considered a good cop if you're allowing these things to happen, or you're turning a blind eye to it. You are no longer considered a progressive, uh, uh, elected official if you're posting police propaganda. You're no, we gotta start drawing a line in these things. Because if you're an officer that knows that you're working with someone with a history of, of misconduct, and you don't report it, you don't say anything, your silence, your, your silence means you're complicit. That means you're for it. And so you taking a meeting, a need means nothing to me. Repeal some of these laws that are preventing police accountability, and then we can take you seriously. But all this lip service and all this, uh, symbolic gesture, it really doesn't mean, uh, mean anything. But, um, like we said, we're gonna have, we'll have our call, we'll have, we'll continue to have our strategic meetings, and we'll roll something out, and we're willing to work with, um, you know, elected officials, y'all be not like what we say, but we're willing to, we get, gotta work with each other, but we're not gonna sit here and have a revisionist history and not tell the truth. And I think if we, and I think if we continue to stand on the side of truth, then, and we really truly want to fix the system, then we should all be able to sit at the table. But I think what, and I can only speak for myself, I, you know, and Miles, you may agree with this or not, what we're not gonna do is have this revisionist history when it comes to how Orlando and Central, uh, Orlando and Orange County have handled police misconduct, police brutality and excessive force over the years. We're not gonna paint this pretty picture, like it's never been a problem here, and this is an isolated incident with George Floyd, and it's just a couple bad apples. All that stuff is over with. If we're not gonna roll up our, you know, you, it's time to roll up your sleeves and actually start talking policy. It ain't about, oh, what we need to do is statistics or a study. No, it's policy time. It's time to change some laws, and it's time to do some policies, and for the, and for the elected officials that just want to give lip service, then don't. Good. I want y'all to meet somebody real quick. That will tell you. What's up? Hey, are you, is this video? Luana, are you here?
I'm here, and I want to apologize. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you. We, you don't need to apologize for anything.
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
Okay, I, 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 I've gotta head back down to, uh, OPD headquarters.
Everything okay?
Um, no, um, I'm afraid.
Afraid of what? What's going on?
I just, after what I experienced and saw last night, the, uh, I'm just afraid of what they go, I saw what the officers did.
What did the officer, what did the officers do last night? Can you, uh, elaborate?
High-fiving, high-fiving, um, they, there was just real, I, I have a major delay in what I'm saying.
Okay. So, so we're on right now. For those who can't see Luana on the screen, we're talking to Luana Gelsa. She's, uh, the president of the Central Florida Associate, uh, the Central Florida chapter of the National Action Network. Oh, there we go. Alright, alright, bring your camera down just a little bit, just a tad.
Okay.
There we go, there we go. Alright, so this is Luana Gelsa, essential, uh, chapter of the Central Florida, uh, National Action Network, uh, environmental activist or advocate, and she's been doing this work long before me, long before Miles. Been out here with the citizen review board, has a wealth of knowledge, um, and so I'm gonna give you the floor to say what you gotta say. And also, I'd like you to speak on, you know, your thoughts about the protests and, you know, the movement being co-opted, and how you feel about some of this, uh, you know, organizing that's being done without, you know, engaging the people that's been doing the work in the past.
I'll, I'll just be honest with you, being over the age of fifty, having a family that I've worked with for many, many years, learning the civil rights movement, it's not new, but it's very concerning in this time and day that people think they can come in here and not talk about policies and photo ops, and what is so important. It hurts me to my heart, because July tenth, four years ago, it was a blackout march. I told everybody to take that energy and use it positively. But everybody didn't hear me. I might not be like, and I ever won an election, but I don't have no mugshot like Buddy Dyer for cheating. I'm about policy and telling the truth. I'm about policy and getting the facts, statistically speaking. Stop buying into the narrative with the taking the knee. How long have I done, taken knee at the Pro Bowl? How long have I been saying that going to the police review board meetings, because TJ, you heard me and you started going with me, and you saw the politics, how they were appointing who they wanted to be there. So what I want everybody to say, I'm not saying don't protest, but I'm looking for those soldiers who understand the policy. I had to get on the phone this afternoon and call Darlene. That's nice, your report. But the use of force metrics is the problem.
Can you speak to that? Can you speak to that?
Force metrics.
Can you speak to that for the people that don't know what you mean by a universal, um, the, you know, it's not universal?
Cut out, but I'm still here with y'all, just to let y'all know.
The simple fact, a universal, uh, metrics is how they use force when they are, uh, going to arrest you. And in April of twenty fourteen, people, six years ago, Orlando Police Department, doing Chief Mina Ray, changed it from a six levels to four levels. If you don't remember, no, Carter, if you don't understand Rufus Holloway, Holloway, if you don't understand, they can walk up to you tonight, people, and pepper spray you. They can use a chemical agent. They don't have to have any call, other than they feel like, uh, based on their discretion, period. And it's covered, and it's nothing you can do about it. So all of those people will be getting pepper sprayed. Cause they changing the policies.
Go ahead, Miles.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Luana, I think that's so powerful, because you know, I went out there Friday, and I thought it was gonna be a peaceful type thing, and it was peaceful for the most part. We didn't have any chemical agents, but you know, Saturday when I went to observe, and yesterday when I went, and I saw, I saw the agents, but Saturday I actually got sprayed. Being with them, um, standing with them when they went into the road, and I was following and trying to get the footage, and thinking that, okay, it's disruptive, but they can't touch us if we don't touch them. And they sprayed off without anybody ever getting physical. So i- it's important for like people like me even, to be more conscious and to contact you and find out what is, what I need to know before I go out there and get caught off guard like I did. So I, I felt what you just said right there.
Luana, what would you, what would you say, and I appreciate that, Miles. Luana, what would you say to people who are out there protesting, and they say, well, okay, how do I get, how do I get involved from here?
It's simple, I'm old school. You know my phone number, four zero seven nine five three five five nine nine. I don't put what I'm going to do always on Facebook. Telling people what you gonna do. That's part of the strategy. We are all being followed on Facebook. They, I have a BlackBerry still today, because I don't want them to be able to hack my calls that I get. Stop telling people, that's, that's number one training. I don't mind you being out there, letting everybody know that it's important to do this. But you, I bet, they are laughing at us people with all of this momentum, all of this momentum. And we are, what are we doing? We are literally telling them exactly, exactly what we're doing. And that's what I'm concerned about. Four years from now, will we be in the same place? It's the same place. Stop, I understand about Mr. Floyd. I, I sympathize. But where are you gonna be come July sixth? Remember the homeless man Terry Johnson?
Terry Johnson, yeah.
Remember he was beaten so bad, he sat in jail for forty-five days, and on the forty-second day, I went to see him, and he didn't know me, and I said, I'm sorry, I gotta come out here and talk to you. And I literally had to say, stick it out. I gotta come out here and talk to you. And I literally had to say, stick it out. When the judge saw what they did to him, they said, let this man out of jail. But they were telling him to take ten years. See, Orlando got problems. I'll say it over and over again, we're still number one in the country per capita for excessive force cases. Even though they changed their use of force metrics to cover up their bad behavior. People look at the policies, look at who's trying to redirect us. I'm looking for those who can see through that. I didn't say they couldn't protest. I'm not saying that. I'm looking for soldiers who understand that's gonna always be there. But if you're not smart enough today to be a true leader and step forward and say, I see that, but we need to stay focused on what is happening for the rest of the voiceless. We'll be right back here again in four years or less.
What are your, what are your opinions on some of these organizations that are, that you don't see on a regular basis doing this work, but then they're out here now in the protest? You hear me?
Yes. Oh, my name Luana Gelsa. I'm the most concerned citizen you'll ever meet. And how often have I, you've been told I'm crazy and hard to work with? See, we gotta be careful. We gotta be careful when we let people tell you about somebody. So these organizations, it's photo ops, it's money involved. Funding is getting ready to come here. And so that's what this is all about. And I know who they are. Do you want me to call out some of them?
Uh, this is a, uh, this is not technically.
I don't usually do that. I'm just telling everybody. Stop letting people tell you.
No, actually, actually, yes, because people need to know, people need to know who, who's, are these culture vultures? Who's doing these type of things?
I could be going, you know. Who was just taking, uh, you know, one of the groups that ha- how I even got so, you know, incimated into this work when I saw was uh Organized Florida. When I first got on here and I've told them countless times about, you know, taking narratives from what I saw and just recently, you know, that was a group that I saw with my own eyes, with my alleged whisper shirts on, collecting money and donations from the marches. So I, I'm gonna definitely have a talk with those leaders over there. And that's the type of stuff that, you know, that's not right because then you paint a picture that this is what we're getting to do this for the community. And this is for that same movement and y'all stay cooperative movements and taking over. That, that's the type of stuff we gotta call out.
Yeah. Yeah, so um. And, and he's saying, uh, there's a question saying, what organizations and politicians can be considered, can be considered allies?
Allies?
Allies, yes. Move the camera down a little bit, uh, Luana.
Okay, allies. Um. Hmm, that's a whole one. That's a whole one. Politicians, where are they? Other than in front of the cameras telling you how to behave and that everything is okay. So you should be able to decide this. You were all over the age of eighteen. Do I really need to tell you that our politicians have not been our politicians here locally? If you don't have your politician on speed dial, first of all, that's a problem. I have a most speed dial, whether I like to speak to them or not. And clearly, I've not only gotten phone calls from two. Two. Believe it or not, Commissioner Victoria Sibley.
Yup.
And all the rest of them, no show, don't talk, don't care. And the reason why I.
Bring your camera down a little bit. Bring your camera down a little bit.
I'm not appalled. I'm just like.
You know, I think, go ahead. Your, your camera's flashing it out. Yeah, you're talking about, you know, organizations who. You don't need an organization for you to do it. You just need to be, to, you don't need to be an expert to be an advocate, right? You just gotta wanna put the work in and link up with like-minded people that actually wanna advocate and do, and do the work. And the way you could do that is, once the cameras are off, do they want to still be there in the trenches with you? That's the key. That's how you could differentiate between some of these activists and what I call, I call Luana, I call them illusionists now, because they're here and they, they're master illusionists. Because they, they, you, you think that they're here, they're here today, gone tomorrow. They're magicians, right? So these illusionists out here that like to put up this front and do this sleight of hand where they're saying, look at how much I care, who much. And then all of a sudden it's, they're, they're gone and they moved on to something else when the trending topics start. They're, they're a problem. And you wanna talk about, okay, which elected officials, which elected officials, um, which elected officials can uh help you in this process? There's an election in August. You can put the elected officials that you would like to help you with this and vet them now. Don't wait. Vet them now so that you can get into, so when you're in office, you, you could do that. Oh, we talked about plenty of solutions.
Okay.
My feet, uh, my, someone said my feet, I'm tired of marching, my feet, my feet hurt. Um, yeah, we talked about plenty of solutions or uh earlier within the, within the feet. Uh, like I said, if your feet are hurt or tired of marching, then we talked about reaching out to your elected official, reaching out to uh what's their stance on uh the current police accountability within uh Orange County, uh, the Sheriff's Department, uh, OPD, and ask them what their position on the police bill of rights. Because the police bill of rights, Luana, is the problem. That's.
Man, they got more freedom than you can ever admit, admit to. Super fact, everybody. Uh, I, I'm getting a little blowback from a people cuz two years ago, when Val Demis, Congresswoman Val Demis, and I don't know if you guys spoke about it, was the only Democrat that co-sponsored with five Republicans about the Blue Lives Matter bill, making it a hate crime. And so what I want everybody to say, I've always told people I have nothing against some politicians. I look at your policies. I don't look at the cover. That's the people who be on Facebook showing the good pictures and saying, this is what I did in the community. I turn the pages. And I look at what you vote on. And I look at your record. And I wanna say this, it's June twelfth. We still got time to find a candidate that we want to support in any of these positions on the state level. So it's not too late to find candidate. You got to June twelfth. Second of all, if you allow someone to manipulate you that's not in your household, that has not respected you as the people they supposed to protect and serve, or they was elected to be public service, then this is what we, we mess up. I've never, I've never understood why we give awards to people like politicians or police for doing their job. The award is their paycheck.
They are, they awarded, then OPD awarded an officer, um, Officer of the Year, and he has a history currently, right now, he has a history of police misconduct. So that just shows you how disingenuous these people are being. There are officers that have given awards for as Officer of the Year, and they have a history and a track record of police misconduct. So there needs to be some type of mechanism. And yes, their police misconduct is public record. But we need to create some sort of mechanism to make these things public. These officers need to be red flagged.
And I will be honest with you, I spend more money paying the city of Orlando to get public records documents on their records. I, we just spent another hundred and fifty dollars to get how many complaints on certain officers. Uh, it's amazing how difficult it is and how expensive it is to get information to protect our community. I can tell you the best vacation that any um officer for Orlando Police has when they have uh done some bad things in the community is they go out to the airport. Well, what is the tourist cap, what are we the tourist?
Yeah, we talked, we talked about that. We talked about going to the airport in the dark shadowy place.
Thank you so much TJ. So what I'm saying to everybody, I apologize for just getting on the call. I am talking to people throughout the country, just making sure people take this information. I understand it's not what you always see on Facebook. It's turn that page. Turn the page. So if an organization all of a sudden pops up in the community, that's great. But check them out. I have a cop watch um Facebook group that I'm a part of. When people wanna be a part, do you think I just go admit, okay? I know we got Facebook.
Hold on, we have, we also have other people that from um that wanna pop in and ask a question. Let me see. All right, uh, who you, um, what's your name? Where you calling from? Hello, can you hear me? What's your name? Where you calling from?
Oh, hey, this is Senator Bracy. How you doing?
Hey, what's, I'm actually shocked. What's going on? Senator Bracy, uh, district, I'm messing up, district, uh.
Senate District.
District eleven, Senate District eleven. How you doing?
I'm excellent.
So Senator, I actually uh was actually gonna invite you on as an actual guest, but I'm glad that you called in. For anybody who can't see him on the actual Zoom call, this is Senator Bracy that called in. Senator Bracy, let me ask you first, what are your thoughts about the protests thus far here locally uh and what's going on around the country?
Well, I'm obviously disturbed with the murder of George Floyd. Um, I've been watching the protests, uh, I attended one in Eatonville, but uh I, I think, I think we need to protest. Um, I think it's necessary. I think the four officers need to be arrested. And uh so I, I think that is the purpose of the um, the protest. So I, I just think we're, we're on the right track, you know, that what I've been hearing about the rioting and the looting, uh, I, I don't agree with, but, but as far as the purpose of the protest, I'm all for it.
So what, here, here specifically in the state, in the state of Florida, and you see what's going on here uh in Orlando, you seeing the tear gas and stuff. How do you feel like, what, or what could you do as an elected official to better hold police officers accountable?
Well, uh, it's interesting. I talked with Sheriff Mina today um, just about his platform. Well, it was a brief discussion, but, you know, I, I believe whatever I can do it from a state perspective, it's, it's a long-term fix. So for example, I had a, I, I had a bill a couple of years back that required uh body cameras for uh police officers and, and law enforcement fought that bill. And, and so that, what we do on the state, it has statewide impact, but I'm.
You said the law enforcement fought that bill?
Oh, they did.
You're talking about the, the, the police, the police unions, right?
Yeah, correct.
How influ-, how, just can you explain to people, and I think that's what people need to hear, how influential? So here you are talking about body cams that will keep not only us safe, but also keep officers uh safe as well, right? And, and document, document things. And here it is, the police, you're telling me that the police unions didn't have, have, you know, fought you on that bill. How influential are they and how, or I guess how detrimental are they to the conversation of police accountability in this state?
Well, they're so powerful that they can, they can kill a bill. I mean, you've got legislators from, let's say, some rural areas where law enforcement's support of their candidacy means everything. So uh, if law enforcement comes to Tallahassee and say, we don't like this bill, they have the ability to shut down a bill. Now, that's not to say that certain counties um don't support body cameras. So that, you, you know, you've got certain, you've got certain counties that will still implement it even though it's not a requirement statewide. And so, but for statewide impact, uh, they can, they can kill the bill pretty easily.
Well, if it's, if, cuz, you know, I've always, you know, heard, you know, when people talk about police reform, police accountability reform, I've heard a lot of people say things like, well, we need more body cameras, we need more training. But we, we can't train the uh white supremacists or anti-black racism out of somebody's, out of somebody's heart and in their, in their implicit bias. How do we eradicate? If these police unions are stopping senators like yourself from doing good work, how do we eradicate um what I classify as race soldiers disguised as law enforcement officers who are terrorizing disenfranchised communities? How do we, how do we eradicate them from the law enforcement officers so we don't have still unrest? You're kind of muffled, Senator.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just saying, they have to be convicted when they do wrong. And that's been a, a huge problem. You, you'll see these police killings and then they, they rarely brought to trial, and if they are brought to trial, they usually aren't convicted. And so they feel like they can do these type of things without uh, without any retribution or consequences. So I think that's the key. And so I, I think that's where we have to move. The direction we have to move.
We have to move to conviction. But here's, and here's the, and I, and I agree with you that they have to be convicted severely. However, when we have an incident here in Orlando at a plaza where police officers are, are shooting into a vehicle, which is against their policy, and then it goes to a grand jury by the state attorney that we uh elected, that we, you know, it was supposed to be the progressive state attorney, and then they're shot, and then we're, after the grand jury says, go ahead, you can proceed and bring charges, the charges are then subsequently dropped. So how do we then, you know, how is the citizens, when it comes to, our, our hands are tied?
Right.
So are we, are we, is this, are we, is it just the wrong elected official in these positions? Or is it the actual system of it, of itself that needs to be changed? And how do we do that?
I, I, I think our entire system, our entire criminal justice system needs changing, but, but I do think it starts with voting. Now, I'm not speaking against our current state attorney. I'm not sure exactly which case you're talking about. Um, but, but we do need to hold all of our elected officials accountable and, and we do that at the ballot box.
Okay, Luana, you have, you had a question. Uh, we have Luana, Senator Bracy, we also have Luana Gelsa.
Hey, Luana.
Who's a, who's an activist. I'm sure you know who. As well.
I'm so sorry. I'm gonna have to disagree. Voting is important, but even when you in office, you gotta hold them accountable. And if you don't like them, you can recall them. But clearly, we have hid behind that. My generation was told to assimilate. And now we hidden behind those comments too far, it's too long. We can't. The generations after me are saying, what are you talking about? I do vote. And so we gotta look at how some people are getting elected and understand that people have gotten into that, just like we got pop-up organizations. But more so, it, it's, we have Mr. Floyd here in Orlando. We have, what was your, what was these elected officials for Noel Carter, Terry Johnson, Kavars Gamble, Rufus Holloway, the Three James Doe that was sexually assaulted by OPD officers on duty. Uh, thirteen-year-olds mauled by canines, the pepper spraying, the block party. No show from the current administration who was elected. Never. When we asked for the resignation of Chief Mina, would you, you saw the video. See, we keep going to Minnesota. And that's what I'm saying. We just like Flint with the water crisis, the environmental crisis that we have here in Orlando. We have our own problems here and we keep burying them by saying we need to do that. Yeah, I'm not saying don't vote. You up for election? We got to, to the twelfth to find another candidate because I need to hear from you because years ago, I said, I don't know you, Senator Bracy. I'm gonna give you an opportunity. We didn't agree on one of the bills that we sponsored and the last day you pulled that bill down. We still dealing with losing trees in our wetland. So clearly, I give people the benefit of the doubt. But I'm looking at when you in office, it's not every time you get elected, what you're doing in office. And I, I get these beautiful newsletters and everything, what everybody's saying they're doing, but I'm in Tallahassee enough. I do my research. And what I'm saying is, people, listen. I, all I want us to do from this point forward is whoever's in office, regardless if you voted for them or not, you show it up on everything they got and you hold them accountable. But if there are no show today, where all of this is going on, that should give you an indication if you need to give them your vote again or you need to find somebody else. But I said, only two elected officials so far have reached out. As much as some of us have worked on this line of work. As much as some of us have worked on this line of work. I've been fighting this battle for too long.
Yeah.
And we got other people that stepping up now and say, oh, this kumbaya cool. It's no kumbaya. We're talking about lives. I just got a phone call down from Fort Lauderdale. I'm tired. People concerned about the children. People lied because now we got military, law enforcement running around with all kinds of gun and they calling this urban warfare. They going to war against us. We have.
Let me get his, let me get his response. Uh Senator Bracy, when you hear, you know, a community leader, an activist, or even a constituent with just pure, you know, factual frustration, that is what I'm gonna call it, as far as not only the system, but feeling like the people who are out here on the front lines, who are actually doing the work to advocate. Um what do you say, what do you say to that? Like, you know, voting is one thing, but then, you know, we voted for you. We put you, you know, we put you in office. So how do you then, okay, and we're considering you, one who's who's gonna put in some work, right? So how do we advocate? How do we get, how do you get your your colleagues to see that, hey, there's a problem on not only just the state level, but there's a county problem and a local problem that comes to police accountability? So how do you get your other folks to see what we're seeing?
Well, um to to respond to Luana, and I I respect you, Luana, I'm not. You know, you you spoke of a number of issues. I I would just say I'm proud of my record uh in the Senate. Um I was the criminal justice chair. Many of the reforms that that you hear spouted out of about in the criminal justice space, every one of them I put forth uh as a chair and and we passed it through the Senate. But we didn't have concurrence in the House. But that's just, just, that's just talking about criminal justice uh space. I'm really proud of that record, but many other things. So um so because we had some disagreements, I'm always willing to talk through those things, Luana or anyone. And they're willing, they're they're able to reach out. Um but as far as getting consensus, you know, that's 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 the million-dollar question. I mean, what what I'm saying is voting, just in a general sense, uh tips the scale on who has the majority and who have the power. These reforms that, just to give one example that I've been trying, along with some of my Democratic colleagues that passed. We haven't been able to move them because we just don't have the numbers. Now, we can work together.
In the Senate, correct?
I'm in the Senate, yeah, so.
No, 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 no. I know you're in the Senate, but the number, for the people that are watching, we're talking to Senator Bracy, so when you say the numbers, you're talking about the numbers in the Senate.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah. For an example, um we had a bill to get rid of uh mandatory minimums for uh drug possessions. And, you know, all the Democrats supported it, all the Republicans, except one was against it. We didn't have the numbers to get, to move that reform forward. And so when you talk about voting in a statewide sense, we have to uh win some of these seats in other areas of the state to actually move statewide policy forward. But uh in Orange County, I mean, we we have a lot of commissioners and and we have mayor uh uh city leaders that we all can work with to to make some some change. And I think, I think that's where we need to direct our energies. I mean, we we, you mentioned Sheriff Mina. I just talked to him today and and I told him how how much this issue with George Floyd bothered me, and I wanted to hear his platform on um incidences in the past uh with police and 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 people, civilians. So before, you know, I support him or anything. So I I think we need to engage locally because that's the best we can do. We can't really control what happens outside of our county as far as.
Well, one thing, one one thing I definitely wanted to, you know, say, and I and and I do give you credit cuz I was not expecting you at all to even call in, so I appreciate the fact that you're taking time out um to call in to to speak with not only me but for anyone else who's in the chat that wants to ask uh Senator Bracy while, you know, while he's with us, any questions, you're more than welcome to do so. A couple of things that I do wanted to, um I do wanna touch on, uh real quick, let me put somebody in the waiting room. Uh that I did wanna touch on is, I think that's the misconception, when you have activists that speak out about the broken system. Uh there's the misconception is that we haven't reached out to our elected officials and, or that we haven't worked, tried to work with people. Um we try to work with everybody and hold people accountable. And I think, and I think um to your point of what you said, as far as, you know, hey, Luana, I have, you know, you could check my record as to work that I've done. Well, instead of asking someone like a Chief Mina, who's been a perpetuator of violence wi- within uh Orlando and Orange County about his, about his platform. We really need to have his his colleagues and his contemporaries check his record. And the record is in his policies that he's put out within his leadership and how the people under his leadership have acted towards us. I've always said that politics is more about, you know, love. You could tell me how much you love me, but it's about how are you gonna show me that you actually love me? And right now, we're not getting a lot of love from the current law enforcement leadership. We're getting a lot of symbolism, we're getting a lot of lip service, but we're not getting any policies. And what's happening is the civil unrest is is uh the the lip service and the lies are fanning the flames of the civil unrest here in Orlando. And when you take a knee down uh and 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 pose for a photo op and and during a protest, and then immediately afterwards, you start spraying people with tear gas and 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 uh and using excessive force on the same citizens of a diverse group. Not just a black uh or African Americans on a diverse uh community here in Orlando. That's a more systemic problem than than we're than we're facing, and it's not in Minnesota. It's here and it's been happening for a while. George Floyd, Terry Johnson is our George Floyd. Noel Carter is our George Floyd. Those those gentlemen are just happy to be alive. They're lucky to be, they're lucky to be alive. So so we really need, so so this is us reaching out again. That's why I have these platforms. This is us reaching out again to elected officials like yourself, and we appreciate you reaching out to us. That we need, we need more tangible and substantial resources and elements to police accountability reform, because right now, we're not having, we don't have anything to really sink our teeth into. And we don't have anything to hold our, hold our head up and say, there's actual progress. Because as you know, after Orlando speaks, Terry Johnson got brutalized the very next day after the Orlando speaks um workshops about police brutality and excessive force. So we are, so we're willing to work, what I'm saying is, in in closing, we're, and I wanna get your thoughts before I go to you, Luana. We wanna, we were willing to work with people, but we can't work with people who have revisionist history. And we can't work with people who are just okay with the status quo. If we've been giving body cams, if we've been talking in circles, and we've been doing that same song and dance, the definition of insanity is doing the same things over and over and again and expecting a different result. I believe we all can agree. So we we need to start trying some new things, but it's up to our elected leaders to really take a gut check diagnostic of what is being done as far as police accountability and really try to find ways to make it work in their capacity and get everybody else to be on board. Does that make, does that, do you understand where I'm coming from or no?
I do, but but let me ask this. What what exactly? How do, how would you like to engage these leaders? What what ideas are you you talking about specifically?
Okay, well, I I'm glad you asked. One of the ideas that I that we have specifically, and Miles, you could speak to this as well. I think we, it's a good time, more than not, is to is to talk about it. Um if you're a police officer and you have excessive force cases and you uh misconduct, a history of misconduct, excessive force or 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 police brutality. One, you shouldn't be allowed to be in schools, watching over, watching over our youth. Not only that, but Orange County should also put in a policy that they should hold the same social media standards that each teacher and substitute, they should be, have the same standard as well. Which means they can't get on social media calling black people useless savages, talking to us about dogs, laughing about the brutality within the, within uh Orange County or Orlando, and then go and and try to protect our youth. And so for not, it's a public safety issue, and I know Miles and I, we were talking about it, something that we were gonna uh roll out and present. But if we don't protect our future, we won't have them. So I think making sure that our children are safe first is is the best issue, and making sure that we have public safety also. Um uh and Miles, I don't know if you still here uh on on there, but he's business, you still here, bro?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Miles.
Yeah.
I didn't know he was on, okay.
I'm basically, we're basically talking about some of the different ideas that we had, so I was, we were surprised that Senator Bracy is here. So do you wanna talk about the other one about the uh the businesses and with cops with excessive force?
Yeah, um and just talking about, you know, the policy that we can really affect, that everybody can agree is for public safety. So one of the ones that we're talking about were businesses that have to have off-duty police officers or police officers present, that they are even finding a database that has that. Luana, you probably will be a very good person to help with that, finding out where we could find out which businesses actually use their police forces. And then getting them to also commit that they won't hire or get anybody to work for them that does have a history of excessive force or complaints and that misconduct. Because that would show that you're standing in solidarity with what we're trying to accomplish across the country and doing your part to make sure that police brutality doesn't continue, and you can simply just make sure you hire the right person.
Right.
You know, those are ways we can have them come to the table without having to feel like they're compromising their beliefs.
Yeah, so we're not saying at this point in time that those places, places of business or schools don't need officers. But we're saying give the opportunities for the officers that are in compliance, that aren't brutalizing, that don't have excessive force cases on their record. Give those officers a chance to to get the uh off-duty hours at these businesses. And for those who are watching, we just won't patronize those businesses if we know that your officer, that you're hiring off-duty officers with a history of excess of excessive force. So those are just some of the
Yeah.
uh components that we have and the ideas that we have that we're actually gonna roll out. We have a meeting about it uh tomorrow, my organizers, and you're more than welcome to join. Um but those are just, and this is not on social media, but offline. Um but these are just some of the ideas that we have, and Luana, I know, do you have some ideas as well?
Oh, yeah.
No, it's it's Senator Bracy. I was just gonna say, uh I really like those ideas in in the direction you're heading in. Uh that was, that was, uh I had an incident that I brought to the sheriff um about an officer that I, that some constituents called me about, that they were concerned about. And so what you're talking about, I think, is is they're valid concerns. I share those concerns and in in any degree, any way I can help bring those concerns to uh our law enforcement leadership. I I'd love to help in that regard, but I I I I agree with the direction you're going.
And now some people are in the chat are saying that they, we don't need police in our schools. I agree, and that's a conversation that that we can have that we don't have. But at least until we have that type of conversation, the least they could do, all right? If we're talking about compromise, you know, in a negotiation, the least they can do is is make sure that the police officers that are currently in schools that they don't have uh excessive force, because if you can't handle adults, then what makes you think that they can actually handle a child? And we seen what happened here in Orlando at the um uh at the uh little kind of school, I'm trying to think. The charter, the charter school, so uh this upcoming school year, that should be a pledge from our elected officials, from our law enforcement leaders, that make sure that any officer with uh excessive force cases are no longer permitted with a history of excessive force cases are no longer permitted at our schools uh and that they're all abiding by the exact same social media guidelines as the teachers of O C P S and the substitutes that they um that they uh select at uh with Kelly Services. I think that's, I think that's extremely reasonable.
Hey, um TJ, if I if I can, I I'd like to uh wrap up and and just follow you the conversation as y'all continue on.
Not a problem.
But I did wanted to get on and say hello, and uh I've been watching what you all have been doing, and I commend you.
I, you know, Senator Bracy, I do appreciate that, and I I thank you for your time. Uh I will uh give you my, I don't know if you have my contact information, but I will send it to uh either your staff or or inbox you my contact information, and uh you're more than welcome to join us tomorrow. We'll send you some details on some uh upcoming meetings. But I appreciate you chiming in uh and speaking with people in the community. That's.
Thank you. Y'all take care.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi.
All right, all right. So what, so, you know, so uh those are just some of the ideas, and I know we kinda impromptu um ro- roll those out, but that's just some of the ideas that myself, uh Miles, um some others have have decided and and talked about. Um and it's about um, it's about public safety, right, Miles? I think Miles is still.
You, sorry about that, but yeah, I do, I do agree. Public safety, and it's saying that you don't have to even get into the controversy mix to say that you can agree these many things.
Yes, yes. And so we have, we have uh Andrew, oh, Andrew Dalton, who's also running for Orange County Sheriff. He said if you have a history of excessive force and aren't uh and aren't good enough for the schools, you are not good enough to be a law, law enforcement officer in the community. I believe that's true as well. He said that that works. If you can't, if you can't be at a school, then you shouldn't be, you know, you shouldn't be able to be in a community. I agree, and I think with Senator Bracy giving his public endorsement of those ideas and his commitment, I think that these are, we're we're well on our way. What do you say, Miles? Um so, yeah, so these are just some of the, these are just some of the ideas that we have. Um and so um to the organizations that are out here doing the protest and riding the, and riding the wave and and doing that stuff, okay, that's great. I, we appreciate that. However, when it comes to policies or any elected official, that's how you do it, Anna Eskamani. You don't go and just present ideas to the city or the county without engaging the constituents that are actually out here doing the work and the groundwork on the front lines. You meet us where we're at. You don't be, you're not, it's not for you to be arrogant and say, well, this is what I'm gonna tell you negroes about how, what we're gonna do for black men, and the he's, these are the statistics that I'm gonna present. That's arrogance, and you're showing your privilege. You're showing.
TJ, I'm about to fall out my seat right now.
Yeah, you're showing, you're showing your privilege. What Bracy just did right there, Anna Eskamani, that's leadership. That's leadership. You don't have to necessarily agree, we don't have to necessarily agree with everything he just said, right? And there's times we can have that conversation and dialogue, but that's respect and that's leadership, and I I I can rock with that.
And that's putting yourself accessible to the people, like not too many people are actually give themselves a chance to be accessible.
Yeah, yeah, and not, yeah, and so when you're out here and you're in, you're spreading political propaganda, and then you're dictating to people who are directly impacted by uh police brutality, excessive force and and basically domestic terrorism. When you're, when you're, when you're not reaching out to the directly impacted and you're dictating to us what you gonna do, when you wouldn't do, you wouldn't allow people to do that on feminist issues within your district or even in the state of Florida, because you're a champion for those issues. So why not show us the same respect when we've been on the front lines trying to get this work done? Luana has been doing this for years. It's disrespectful to her. She's a black woman. So if you wanna believe all women, if you wanna respect black women, why not reach out to a black woman who's on the front lines doing the work? If you're a woman's advocate, and I know she may not say that, and Miles may not say certain things, but someone needs to check you. You do good work, and I'm not discounting the work that Anna Eskamani does in her, in her district or for her causes and for her issues. But she knows, as someone who hasn't organized his background, she knows what she's doing is disrespectful. She knows what she's doing is disingenuous. And so what we need to do with our elected officials, you gotta have some humble pie and some humility. When when Luana came checking, coming for Bracy as far as the disconnect that they have, that was humility. That was humility to say, you know what, all right, I, we could disagree, agree to disagree, check my record. These are the things that I've been doing, whatever. We all have our parts to play. But when you start telling people what you, you're no, you're no better than Trump. Trump just got up on on the, on on the stage talking about what he's gonna do. You think he, he, you think he uh, he's. You think he, he, you think he, uh, he just told him, this is what I'm gonna do, and I'm gonna just tell everybody. At least he had the decency to have a conference call with all the governors. You just decided you just gonna do it. Please don't, please don't get the, and I, and I'm, I'm speaking very frankly to her, because I know she's listening. Please don't misconstrue what, what I'm saying, all right? What I'm telling you is, if you wanna, if you wanna come over and you wanna help, then help. We are not the help. We are not your sharecroppers. We are not the ones that are just gonna, you dictate to us what we're gonna do in our community, and you just throw some crumbs on the floor, and we just supposed to be happy that Lord Jesus, Anna Eskamani done said that she gonna come and help us? F that. F that, keep yourself over there. And trust me, we know your aspirations, and eventually you're gonna need some black votes. You're gonna need some black supporters. Don't disrespect, don't fall into the trap that the rest of the Democratic Party falls into, where you're not respecting black votes, black women, and black men. This ain't about being, putting on our issues and doing cosplay. This is not Black Experience Disney, where you get to pray around and, and be and speak about our experience in the media without consulting us and having really no idea what it's like to be a black woman, what it's like to be on, uh, uh, in our communities dealing with OPD. You have had plenty of opportunities to speak on the issues, and you declined. You ignored because it didn't fit what you were doing and your plan of political, of political success. That's what's going on with you. I'm telling you, this is our community and we take ownership of it. So don't get it twisted. Because when I tried to meet with you, you declined to meet with me, but you went over there and smoked weed with Joe, with Joel Greenberg over at the tax collector over in Seminole County, but you ditched the meeting with me about talking about our issues years ago. And yes, I do know about that. Please understand, I'm not the one. I take, I take this very seriously when it comes to this craft of activism and organizing our, in our communities. Do not disrespect us.
Amen, brother. And I, I, I just want to say that if anybody's watching this and, uh, anybody else is, is not the angry black man sentiment right now, this is actually.
No, I'm just being real, and I know, I'm just being, I'm, you know, the time we start talking truth to power.
That I echo that. And I, and I wanted to know that I echo that, you know, I echo that, and that not just that, that I seen firsthand how our plight has been co-opted into different movements. And they would know that I have worked with Chacha, many members, survivors of the post movement. But please stop trying to associate our plight with Orlando Strong and the posts and trying to use it to rejuvenate the movement that y'all have cultivated over there, because it has not been for the black community. So when we're trying to help the black community, let's help the black community, because you're sounding like All Lives Matter. We try to change the subject to about different communities that is not being affected right now.
Yeah, yeah. And stop, and stop, and, and it's tacky to try to use other women, other people as shields to say, oh, to, to represent as if you're saying, well, loo- look at all the black friends I got. They're, 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 they're down with me. Look, man, we know these tactics. It ain't gonna work. Listen, man, listen, if you haven't read, uh, Sun Tzu, The Art of War, know your, one of the rules is know your opponent. Yes, you may have resources and endorsements and all sorts of stuff, but this ain't what you want over here. Please play nice. We can all work together. I truly believe so. I believe you can be an asset to the things that we're doing. I truly believe so. I truly believe so. And I don't think, I don't necessarily think you're a bad person, not that you've shown me. But what you're not gonna do is, is disrespect us and ignore us, and then dictate to us what we're, what you're, what you think that we're gonna do. You, you are not Miss Millie, and I am not Oprah, and this is not the color purple. So act right.
Hey, hey, guys. I'm just sitting back here enjoying this, but as that black woman who's been painted angry, because I'm well informed, I always tell people, I'm not an angry black woman. I'm a well-informed black woman who is angry about what she knows and experiencing. And I, I, yes, I'm a bit older than all of you, but I've never left this movement. And one thing I can say is, you were correct, Eskamani and all of them. When the black women were going through the sexual assault cases, the Jane Does that I was dealing with, and even with the latest sexual assault case that was in Lake Yola, when that same guy sexually assaulted a woman three weeks earlier in Paramore, and the officers did nothing. As a black woman, I always tell everybody, it's over a hundred black women have been killed by law, by law, by, by police. And I say, say our names too. So what I'm saying, they never, instead, they want to tell me, baby, I've been here too long. I've been here too long, and I know the game. And see, you don't do your research and you want to. But I just want to say this to them. We had a community action plan that we developed, and nothing has changed. It's been presented, uh, it, actually, I help people all over the country using this same plan. And it's working in their communities, but here in Orlando, we want to fight among each other and tell them, well, I got tend to, you, dude, I need to see you. I'm a person who look at the ones who in the pages. And all I'm saying is, that white paper study, and I tell people my background, I'm economics and I'm mathematics. So what they say, I understand the economy, I understand stats, I understand data. I'm a collector of your research. And clearly, if they have you believing that there's no problems here, that's the redirect I've always talked about. TJ, have I not? Redirect from, the photo ops from, they don't want you to know these problems are going on. And I want to say this, because I know I don't want to be the only one talking. As much work I've done in this field, and as much work as you've done, TJ, I don't know about you, Miles, but have any, and I'm the president of the National Action Network of Central Florida. And everybody screaming, no justice, no peace. But I'm getting phone calls from people all over the country, and yet I have not received a phone call from the law enforcement officer, Sheriff Mina, or Chief Ralone.
See, and.
But they were taught to never call, and that's because they don't want to, they don't want to hear the truth. And but the truth is what the community needs to be earned. That's why we are in pain. I'm saying, we're in pain, and, and the calls that I was getting today, I'm making sure nobody don't get harassed in Paramore. I'm making sure, just like the governor family just extended the moratorium on rent. So nobody will get evicted. That phone call just came through. So we're working together, but we're working and respecting each other. And the one thing I can say about this current administration and the ones that's come before, they pick and choose who they think are safe negroes. That could be spokespersons for our community.
Yes.
And like I said, I've been here a long time. I've been here a long time, and I've learned from some of the best. And clearly, that's our mistake. No one is my community leader, other than the ones I can work with who respect each other. We are never gonna always agree. But if you're not doing the research, and you don't even have respect for people who've been out here, that lets me know it's about opportunity. And that's what's hurting our community. Don't be an assimilate, like the boy, don't be a part. I'm not saying don't work with them, but they don't even have the, the, the respect.
Yeah.
The respect that some of us have been out here fighting for. My forefathers, you talk about Dr. Key. Oh, God, my family, we, 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 we're from Georgia.
Yeah.
The Selma March, one of the first of the eight.
Yeah.
One of the blackmas, one of the teachers, the eight teachers that started the Selma march was a blackman, a family member. We go back history in this movement. And you tell me, you can't even respect me to say, Luana, what action plans, what information you got? That lets me, you, you don't care. It's about the photo op and what you can gain. And that's what we need to stop today. If anything, we can do in this movement, that will make me feel wonderful, fulfilled in my fight to support, if we can now move forward and support each other, but respect each other. I've never said we got to agree on everything, because we cannot, because I don't want to agree with you on everything, TJ or Miles, because that don't bring diversity to the table. But respect is what is missing. And if someone can tell you something negative about a person you've never met, you got two options. You can believe that individual or go find out for yourself. And I was taught, go find out for myself. Do your own research, because clearly, they don't want you to connect with that individual. Because they see them as a threat. Or they see somebody they cannot control. I tell everybody, my favorite saying is, you talk about color purple. I tell everybody, I'm freeing up the plantation. I love me some hoppo, but I kill them dead. And what I mean is, I love my community. But when it comes to this fight, I'm gonna fight for my voiceless. And I'm not gonna let these individuals continue to under, continue to rob us blind. And that's what they're doing. Go ahead and march. I'll be there if you need a monitor. I'll be there if you need some advice. I'll be there if you need somebody to come get y'all, bail you out, because I got people saying, I can get this person out and stuff. I'll be there. But can you at least respect those who've been there before you? Because if you don't, you're gonna repeat and make the same mistakes some of us have.
And that's probably, and I, I actually got to run into here to get my child real quick, so I wanted to close and say that.
No, you're good. I was about to, I was just, I was either gonna do an altar call or wrap up, but I appreciate.
I was gonna say real quick though, I'm gonna pull with both of y'all and on this Zoom. You know, when I first started doing this work, I was one of the people that we're referring to right now that was just so fired up that I felt like my passion and my heart was my research, right? I felt like that, I grew up in Paramore, and I grew up in the hood, so couldn't nobody tell me what the hood needed, right? And I feel like I learned the hard way, a lot of things that was warranted me, that I did not know in the beginning. And so what I've learned with the new wave is, I've come to them on some less hands-on approach, and when they need me, I'm there for them. And I'm learning, man, I'm learning my people were like that, how you were with me. And Luana, how you always gave me research, you always gave me the information, always extended and let me know. And there's times where I might have been on go, and I didn't take that call. So I learned myself, and just for anybody listening, you know, reach out to the people who was doing it before you, because I've been doing it for the past four, almost five years, and I still feel like I still got another 10, 15 years before I can tell somebody, I'm an expert, or I'm, this is what I do for real. So you know, I appreciate people like y'all still staying in here. And like TJ told me the other day, and private was talking, he said, you know, activism is a young man's sport. And if he's not setting it up for the next person to get the tools they need and to take that vision and help it grow, that he's not doing his part. So you know, I appreciate that we can start that kind of system, because we gonna need it. We definitely gonna need it.
Absolutely, we all need to stay on code. And, you know, I appreciate everybody who's, uh, been engaging with us, uh, in the room heavy engaging conversation. Appreciate Luana hopping on. Thank you so much for your wisdom. Um, uh, thank you, Senator Bracy, for, um, for hopping on and fielding some questions and, uh, having this, uh, having a brief interview and impromptu, uh, and I like that, because most, most interviews are, are scripted, but on the soapbox, we don't have any scripted interviews, uh, with not only elected officials, but entertainers. Uh, and Miles, I appreciate you, brother, and your, your growth. And I told you that from when I saw you at, um, in Windomere protests. It, you know, growth heals, growth heals all wounds, you know? And I think that, um, I've made some mistakes, I've grown as well, um, and I've made some mistakes. We all make some mistakes. That, that's, that's how this game, well, not this game, that's how it goes. That's how you cultivate your craft, that's how you get better as an activist. And but it's gonna take us all to navigate the minefields so that we can ultimately produce for our community so that we can get justice and put an end to this anti-black racism. So, um, I appreciate everybody who's watched us tonight. Um, stay tuned for more, uh, solutions and things that we have coming forward. If you're going to march or protest, do so, and please be safe. Uh, I believe in peaceful protests. I'll say it again, but I do not believe in convenient protests. So make sure that with everything that Trump is saying, that no one is trying to accuse you or set you up as you are saying that you are a domestic terrorist, or saying that you are trying to incite riots. Make sure you check this, make sure you check the Soapbox page, uh, to stay up to date on not just what's going on here in Orlando, uh, but also what's going on around the country with all of these protests. Make sure that you, uh, look out for these, uh, the attorneys. We have the information on the Soapbox page for the attorneys that are doing pro bono work, that if you get, if you get arrested, uh, at any of these protests. And as always, we're doing a pandemic, make sure that you are staying sanitized. Make sure you are safe, you're wearing your mask, if you going out, you're wearing your gloves. Um, and don't forget, if you need to, for your mental health state, uh, if you need to unplug for a little while, for a couple hours, please do so, because this fight for civil rights, uh, is gonna continue. That's why it's the movement then, now, and everybody, we're all apart, and we have a responsibility for the forever. So I appreciate you all joining us, uh, on the Soapbox. I appreciate you, Miles, uh, for doing this, uh, Community Town Hall, Luana, uh, Senator Bracy, and everybody in the chatroom. Uh, we're out. Peace. Thank you.